Good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Pittsburgh hearings on July 17th, 2025. And the first case of the morning is zone case four A of 2025 for eight seventy seven Freeport Road. We have the applicant team in the room, and I am recusing on this matter and turning it over to Mr. Richardson. So go forth.
Okay. Mr. McKeegan, you have your whole team with you here in person? Okay. Daniel, would you like to read the case in, please? Then we'll swear everyone, and I think you've been here since we've been back live, but we tend to go up to the podium now because that's where the microphone is. All right.
This is zone case four A of 2025 for eight seventy seven Freeport Road. The applications for a wall sign for Dick's Sporting Goods and they're requesting variance from section nine nineteen dot O three dot M dot five A. Eighty square foot maximum wall sign size is permitted and two hundred and thirty point five square feet is requested. And a four foot maximum wall sign letter height is permitted and seven foot high letters are requested.
Okay, anyone that's going to testify, including counsel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be before the board here. This hearing is for a revised and reduced wall sign for the new Dick's Sporting Goods store in the Waterworks Shopping Center. Previously, back in February, a application was presented, which the board denied. I think if you look at the record, there was a paucity of evidence presented at that time, so we're going to try to correct that in the first instance. And secondly, this is a new application. We have taken the hint that you gave in the last hearing to reduce the size of the sign and reduce the size of the letters. And we will, we will take it from there. So if we can just linger on this slide for a minute, the Waterworks Shopping Center is rectangular in shape. Its access is off of Freeport Road, which is the yellow, yellow marked road at the bottom of the slide. It's a little bit unusual in terms of most shopping centers in that it does not have a direct access off of Route twenty eight. The accessways are off of Delafield Road, which is on the left hand side of the screen, which is really a, a, a street in the borough of Aspenwall. It's not a particularly high volume street. And then an exit at Fox Chapel Road, which is the yellow line on the right hand side, which again dumps you off on Freeport Road. It's also a bit unusual in that this shopping center does not have what you would find in most suburban shopping centers, which is a monument sign, a large sign at a main entrance that kind of announces the stores that are in there. So as we move through this, just keep in mind that the access is going to be off of Freeport Road at the bottom of the screen. And there is no monument sign or other large, large visible sign that lets motorists know what's, what's available inside the center. The Dick's store in particular is going to be occupying that white square in the middle of the center. It's a standalone building. It was originally a Hills Department Store and then converted to a Walmart and now will be converted to a Dick's. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Daniel. It's also important for the board to understand that, well, the neighborhood was described as Lincoln Lemington. It's only Lincoln Lemington if you hit a pretty good golf shot because it's on the opposite side of the Allegheny River from the bulk of the city. It's really an appendage on the portion of the zoning map on the left. It's that kind of blue, yellow, red rectangle on the north side of the Allegheny River. The blue is St. Margaret's Hospital. The white is the half of the shopping center in which the Dick's sits. And the red is the original part of the Waterworks Shopping Center, which was built thirty or forty years ago. The Dick's store is in a UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial Zone. Business signs are regulated there under code nine nineteen O three M five. And as Daniel indicated, those regulations allow for two, two, a business sign eighty square feet in size with a four foot maximum letter size. In the case originally heard by this board, the proposal was for a sign that was over three hundred feet in size using eight foot letters. The proposal before you today is for a sign that's two hundred and thirty square feet in size, so it's been reduced using seven foot tall letters. So the first witness will be Frank Marchiano. So Frank, if you would like to come up to the podium, please.
Okay, hold on. Before we switch speakers, I need your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin McKeegan, M C capital K E E G I N.
Thank you.
I apologize. All right, Frank, could you please, for the benefit of the court reporter, give your name, spell your last name, please, and then your business address?
Yes, Frank Marchiano, M A R C H I A N O. Business address is six seventy seven Dunks, Dunks Ferry Road in Salma, PA.
Okay, and you've come here from Philadelphia. By whom are you employed?
Image One Industries.
And what does Image One Industries do?
Manufacture signage.
Okay, how long have you been involved in the sign industry?
Forty years.
Okay, and during that time, you've had experience in all types of signs for retail stores?
Yes, from fabrication to estimating permitting, all, all above.
Okay, have you reviewed Pittsburgh's zoning code and its regulations regarding business sites?
I have.
And have you visited the Waterworks Shopping Center?
I have.
So you're familiar with its location?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can go to the next slide, please, Daniel. So this is the proposals that are before the board today. The one at the top is the proposal that was presented in February. The one at the bottom is the one that's before you today, and that's just to give you a feel for how the sign has been reduced in size. If we can go to the next slide, please, Daniel. So we want to talk a little bit about the Waterworks Shopping Center, Frank. Can you just walk through for the board what the numbers on this slide indicate and what, what these are doing?
Sure, each number across the bottom, the green numbers, the yellow numbers and the green square circles indicate the distance of view, viewability from that point of the road, access directly to that Dick's store and the frontage.
Okay, so the numbers are denoting where entrances to the shopping center are, and then as we go through it, we'll show how far those are from the Dick's store.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Now, just to confirm what I told the board, is there a monument sign at the shopping center?
There is not.
Is there a direct access to the shopping center from Route twenty eight?
No.
So you drove there yesterday and came off of twenty eight. Could you just tell the board what happened to how you had to get into the shopping center?
Yes, it's the two adjacent roads before you get to Freeport Street are the only access to actually viewing the front of that shopping center in its entirety.
Okay, all right, so let's focus on the Dick's store for a minute. Are there particular challenges regarding the visibility of this store? Does it line up with any of the accessways directly?
It does not. There's only one advantage point within the distance.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Sorry to interrupt, and you might be getting to this. Are there also trees or other landscaping or buildings in the forward out parcels that obstruct the view?
Buildings in the front along those trees adjacent to all those buildings.
Okay, I, you might have been getting to that, but I'd be interested in hearing about that, too.
Thank you for, for bringing that up. The other, the other question I'd like to ask you, Frank, is relative to elevation, is Freeport Road higher or lower than the store?
It's slightly lower, if not parallel or flat.
So you do have to look a little bit up to see this better from?
Yes, up, up the road is maybe if I, if I can guess, I would say to ten to twelve feet below the grade of the parking lot.
Okay, all right, so now if we can go to the next slide, please, Daniel. And we're going to try to go through these fairly quickly, but each of these slides is tied to the, the first, the previous slide. So this is entrance number one to the shopping center. It's by Taco Bell. And it's, we're giving the distance to the store from that location is about over almost eighteen hundred feet.
Eighty feet.
Okay, and from that, from that store, now you're proceeding eastbound from this picture. Can you even see the Dick's store there?
No, the block is completely blocked by the buildings.
Okay, we go to the next slide, please, Daniel. All right, so now we, now we're coming into the Giant Eagle entrance. We are roughly fourteen hundred feet away from the store. Going back to Mr. Richardson's question, you can see there's some trees there which block visibility. Do you think if those leaves weren't on that tree, you might be able to get a glimpse of the store?
It'd be difficult. The building is really what's blocking you.
Okay, all right, if we can go to the next slide, please. All right, now we are at the next entrance. This entrance is signalized. We are roughly a thousand feet from the Dick's store. Again, are there things that block the visibility of the sign?
There is. There's the pylons out at the entrance and that restaurant just, just behind it.
Okay, next slide, please. So now we've come to the one entrance where the store is, is actually visible. Is that intersection signalized?
It's, it, it's not. It's doesn't, yeah, that's the only advantage point between Wendy's and McDonald's, that you can actually see the sign from the road heading in that direction.
And again, we've got, we're looking, the slide on the left is, is kind of a view coming out from the center, but then from the one on the right, you're looking at the center. And your, let's see, the angle's kind of covered it up there. Make sure we have the measurement in there.
That's off five hundred.
Five hundred feet or so from this store. Okay, great, all right, next slide, please. All right, so now we've proceeded a little further east. You can kind of make out the Dick's store there, but is this entrance really particularly usable for traffic?
Actually, not really an entrance at that point.
Okay.
That's just the only advantage point is viewable.
Okay, all right, next slide, please. Okay, now we're at another signalized intersection. We're roughly six hundred and fifty five feet from the store. You can see the store, but if you're a driver, is that, is that shot? Are you looking directly at the store or is it in your periphery?
It's peripheral, it's in your peripheral, peripheral vision for the most part.
Okay.
And the angle also diminishes the viewability.
And being in the periphery and the angle, does that require, in your opinion, larger letters in order for the sign to be visible?
Yes.
Okay, next slide, please. We're almost through these. Okay, we are through these, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're going to look, go to Mr. Richardson's, and we'll go through these very quickly. These are some of the buildings that sit between Freeport Road and the main part of the center where the Wendy's is. So that's the Taco Bell at entrance one. Next slide, bank building, kind of at entrance two. Next side, the back of the Chili's. Next slide, please. The McDonald's, that's at the intersection you were talking about where the, where the store is visible. And then that restaurant has since changed its name since that photograph, but that's, that's the last one. Okay. Next slide, please, Daniel. All right, now, so in terms of neighborhood conditions, we have two slides here that depict some existing signs at the center. Can you, if you know, can you tell the board roughly how big these signs are?
Each one is probably over a hundred forty to a hundred sixty square feet.
Okay, I would comment that the Giant Eagle Market District sign, there was some discussion about this at the first hearing. There is an occupancy permit, which if the board wants, I could provide that indicates that sign is two hundred and thirty square feet in size. It was approved by this board via variance back in twenty fourteen. Next.
What are the sizes of the letters? Do we know on these?
Do you?
If I can guess, there were probably four foot on the lowercase in Market District, probably six feet in the M and the T in Market District. I would say thirty inches to forty inches in the Giant Eagle.
Okay, all right, next slide, please. And these are two other stores in the, in the Waterworks Shopping Center. Can you provide any estimate as to how big those letters are?
The Ross letters are over six feet. The dress for less is, is over three, roughly three feet. I calculated that to be about two hundred forty square feet overall in the Ross. The Home Goods is almost two hundred.
Other than the Market District, do any of the other stores in this shopping center have a certificate of occupancy for their signs?
You know, I tried to go through the occupancy permit site that the city has, and there's several hundred occupancy permits. So honestly, I suspect they do, but I don't have, that was the one I focused on.
Sure.
All right, so last question for you, Frank. Based on your visit to the shopping center, your experiences on Freeport Road, the entrances and the other factors we've discussed, is the size of the proposed sign now the minimum necessary to alert drivers on Freeport Road to the location of the store?
Yes.
Okay, so anything smaller than that might create issues in terms of drivers being able to locate the store?
With the conditions and the factor of fifty one feet per second at thirty five miles an hour, you don't have any advantage points to give you enough time to cite that other than between McDonald's and Wendy's.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no other questions for this witness unless the board.
I don't have any, LaShawn.
No additional questions.
Got one other witness. We won't take very long. Shannon? All right, Shannon, if you could please, again, for the court reporter, give your name, spell your last name and your business address.
Sure, Shannon Yekel, Y E A K E L. With Dick's Sporting Goods, Senior Director of Real Estate Development. Address is three forty five Court Street, Coriopolis, PA, one five one oh eight.
And what is your role with the project for this new Dick's store?
So I work on the leases for the Dick's stores and any other banner that Dick's owns. Work on the leases and the development of it in the construction, work with the construction team.
Okay, so you're familiar with what Dick, Dick's would typically do at a standalone store of this type, correct? How does this sign package or how does the sign that we have before the board today, how does that compare to what Dick's would typically include on the front of a store?
Well, our prototypical elevations include signage that is eight foot letter sets just for the Dick's letters. And we typically have sporting goods underneath it. We chose to take that away here to get the larger Dick's letters. But we typically have, it's over four hundred square feet is our typical, prototypical signage.
Are those prototypical signs usually in suburban shopping malls?
Not there, we, most of the time get them. I would say a majority of the time, probably seventy five percent, eighty percent of the time, we have eight foot letters.
I'm just asking, are they typically?
Oh, I'm sorry, most of.
Located in suburban shopping malls or are they, you know, this is a little bit different in that it's more of an urban shopping mall than a suburban shopping mall?
I would say that it's typical in a suburban shopping mall. We, the reason is because we don't have a lot of urban locations. We have Boston that we just opened last year, and that has a seven foot ladder set.
Okay, so I have no other questions for Shannon. Just wanted to get on the record how Dick's would typically approach a store this type.
Okay, LaShawn, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the room or online that wanted to be heard?
It does not look like there's anybody online we'd like to provide testimony.
Mr. McKeegan, if you'd like to submit something, you can, but I think we've, I mean, we've heard and understood the evidence, so I don't feel it's necessary unless LaShawn would like something.
Thank you. I will gladly accept that invitation not to submit anything, and we'll look forward to the board's answer for you. Okay, thank you very much for paying your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case of the morning. You sure you don't want to stay for this, Mr. McKeegan? Next case of the morning is zone case ninety four of twenty twenty five for twenty one O three Nobles Town Avenue. The applicant, it's, we're looking for Zach Cohen online. Mr. Cohen? Can you say something so that we know that you're there? You've just muted yourself.
He raised his hand.
No, he's, I think he's being admitted as a panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you the only person who is going to be presenting this application?
Yes.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is case ninety four of twenty twenty five for two one O three Nobles Town Avenue. The applications for the installation of a wall sign for Giant Eagle, and they're requesting a variance from section nine nineteen dot O three dot M dot five A. Eighty square foot maximum wall sign area is permitted and one hundred and forty five point five square foot wall sign is requested.
All right, Mr. Cohen, we have your materials up. Can you explain what it is that you're proposing? Having had the preview of a wall sign case before you, you understand, I think, what the board is interested in hearing as to why you're proposing a sign that's nearly twice the size that's permitted.
Yeah, yeah, so this first slide just showing the, the post notice. You can go to the next one. And this is a short presentation, but I just want to show that this, this sign is over three hundred or approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the street. This is a large building. It's a Giant Eagle. And if you can go.
Can I, can I just make an assumption here? In the slide that you provided, the building is identified as a shop and save that is temporarily closed. Would it be correct in thinking that Giant Eagle is assuming ownership and is going to be running the?
Yes.
What is identified as a shop and save?
Yeah, I just don't think Google is updated yet, but yeah, it's a Giant Eagle.
Okay, but so is the signage that's proposed replacing Giant Eagle signage for the shop and save signage that had been there?
There is an existing giant, if you go to the next slide, there is an existing Giant Eagle slide or sign on the building. Is one hundred eleven square feet.
So you have an existing sign, but you want to be bigger. Is that the?
Yes, yeah, the reason being, just given the, the sheer size of the building from the street, the existing sign does look very small and unproportionate to the building size.
But it's, yet it's functioning as a sign and it's closer to the area that's permitted for signage.
Yes, yep, and, yep, the storefront is two hundred and thirty feet long, thirty two feet in height. So again, they just want to propose a larger sign since the building is set back so far from the road. And the existing sign does look very small in comparison to the rest of the sign.
Well, there's a difference between the maximum size of a sign that you want as opposed to the minimum sides that would afford relief. So why is that the smallest sign that would work and still achieve greater visibility? I mean, it, again, the, the code doesn't exist to, we're not, it, it's eighty square feet. We're, we're working with eighty square feet, and you have a sign that's closer to that than what you're proposing. So it's like, did you do any analysis, like how far out this would be visible? Like what's in the way? I mean, you saw that some of the evidence that was presented in the last case.
Yeah, and, yeah, and from my understanding, I, I was, I thought we were limited to ten minutes, so I made the presentation very short. I understand if you'd be more comfortable tabling, I can come back with more information.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it, it, again, it's nearly twice the size that's permitted, so we're, we're thinking about that. That doesn't mean that additional evidence is going to make that any better. I mean, is there a smaller size that you could live with? I mean, again, consider it.
Yeah, the question I was going to ask is, is whether you're able to present any evidence that the size of the sign as it currently exists is causing problems or is inadequate in some way for wayfinding or visibility. I mean, in my opinion, this is just one board member's opinion, but if, if you thought that there were evidence like that that you could provide and you wanted to table and come back, I'm not opposed to that, but I think that's the kind of thing we would need to hear. So I'll, I'll leave it up to the chair and my fellow board members whether they're okay with the tabling. But if that's the kind of thing you think you can come back with, then I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I would neither.
I think we can do that. Again, this is my first time with this board, so I wasn't sure how much to present.
Yeah, and you're not limited to ten minutes. We just schedule things in ten minute increments. So if there's additional evidence to be considered, we'll consider it. But again, like the, the code, another thing I would be curious about if, how long has this facility been operating as a Giant Eagle with this? And was, was the smaller signage, the one hundred and eleven square feet, was that approved in some fashion?
Yes, I, I don't have the date of approval on that. I have to go back and check. But yeah, they, they did get approval.
Okay, and the other thing, if it had been a shop and save, how did the shop and sage, shop and save signage compare with what's there now and what's being proposed?
Yep.
I mean, those are the kinds of things that's like, that would be helpful. And then we haven't gone through your other materials, but again, like Mr. Richardson said, it's the context of the site is important for us to understand the visibility. And, and again, I will just caution you that, like, the maximum that you want is not necessarily what we're looking at. We're looking at the minimum variance that would afford relief, not the maximum that you want. So keep that in mind, too.
Yep, okay.
But if, 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 we have another hand raised from Jim Hickey. Is he on your development team? Or? Mr. Hickey? Are you here for this case about the Giant Eagle signage?
Yes, can you hear me?
Are you here on behalf of the applicant or do you have another view?
I have another view.
Okay, then, then we're going to wait until the, we, we may be tabling this and giving the applicant an opportunity to come back. And we would.
I can stay on. Yes, I'll stay on.
You can stay on. Yeah, 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 it's just, everybody to their turn. So going back to Mr. Cohen, if you think there are additional, there's additional information that you could provide us that would be helpful for us in, in reaching a decision, then I think it probably would be more effective if we table this for today and reschedule to a later date.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, and seeing the first presentation. Yeah, I agree. I'm, and seeing the first presentation helps me understand how much detail you guys uh would need, so.
We made them come back, too, so just so you know, that, that wasn't the first go around with that application.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh, yep, if we can table, then we'll uh prepare some more information for everyone at the next meeting.
All right, well, um, so, um, Mr. Hickey, could you um, I, I'm just trying to think of, uh, Mr. Shepke, could you make sure you get Mr. Hickey's um information so that we can give him direct notice of a revised date for a hearing?
Um, Mr. Hickey, if you could send an email to zoningboard@pittsburghpa.gov, um, just so that I have your contact information, I'll let you know when the hearing is rescheduled, and I'll put that email in the chat as well, um, just so you can see it.
All right. Mr. Hickey, did you have any other questions? Because we're not gonna have a full hearing today, so um, the, your comments may be addressed in the revised application. Okay, Mr. Hickey, you're muted right now, so.
Okay, good morning, sorry about that. Okay, real, okay, yes, um, again, um, can I just give you, I'm not really good with the emails, but um, the gentleman that was asking my information, can I give it to you quickly, or as a city resident, once this is rescheduled, will I get a le- letter in the mail like I did for this one?
Um.
Well, what we're, we're, what we're proposing to do is to give you direct information, so.
Okay.
If it's easier to get that by email or a phone call.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we'll do it either way, but
Okay.
Um, we just don't want you to have to give your phone number online if you don't want to.
Okay, I got you. Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just need uh sixty seconds of your time or less. Um, I'm, I'm a city resident. I work with Tricia Kill Smith. She's our um, she's our ar- area um person, um.
Counsel. Oh, okay.
A council person, sorry, council person. So anyway, where I'm at is, I live directly across the street from a Giant Eagle shop and save.
Well, we're not, like, Mr. Hickey, we're not having a hearing today, so we're not gonna hear from you today. Um, but can we contact you through the councilwoman's office?
Uh, yeah, yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great. Yes, that'd be awesome.
All right, we'll make sure that you get notice of when the hearing is rescheduled.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, and thank you for understanding. We, we want to get the best information, so that's why we're gonna.
Absolutely, and this hap- and this happened the first time, too, la- last July, so I can tell you that's, that's when the first permit went through as well, because I was going online for it as well, so it's been a year.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right, very good.
All right, thanks.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, Mr. Hickey, you can go back on mute now. There we go. All right, Mr. Cohen, you'll coordinate with Mr. Shepke, we'll get a new date, and we'll tell Mr. Hickey when that date is, so.
Okay.
We're gonna move on to the next hearing of the morning, which is zone case thirty-seven of twenty twenty-five for seventy-four forty-nine Frankstown Avenue. Um, I have listed that it's to be Ryan England. Mr. England, are you with us? We'll admit you as a panelist. Wow. Mr. England, are you with us?
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, are you the only person who is going to be presenting on this application?
I am, thank you.
All right, so do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is case thirty-seven of twenty twenty-five for seven four four nine Frankstown Avenue. The application is for the addition of four units to an existing multi-unit residential building, and they're requesting a variance from nine fourteen dot oh two. Four additional parking spaces are required and zero spaces are requested. And a special exception pursuant to section nine sixteen dot oh four dot B, uh, thirty-foot dumpster residential compatibility setback is required and five feet is requested.
All righty, Mr. England, we have your materials up, and could you explain what it is you're proposing to do?
Sure thing. Um, if we go to the next slide, we got posted notice. And then, yeah, just for context, we were at the board maybe three years ago about the same property.
It looked familiar, okay.
A slightly different development proposal.
Okay.
And we can just go to the next slide. Um, so what, um, just context-wise, uh, this is in Homewood. Um, we have a small park, Baxter Park, right across the street. Uh, we're at the intersection of Frankstown and Braddock. And as you can see, there's a good bit of vacant uh parcels in the area, and then kind of north and in some other directions, um, south, there are um residences, mixture of single-family and multifamily dwelling. Um, so next slide. As a brief overview, um, what we're proposing, uh, the Frankstown building and the Braddock building are two separate adjacent buildings, and previously we had proposed combining them, but none of that work ever proceeded. So we still have two six-unit apartment buildings that are vacant, they're in poor shape. We'll go to the next slide. And so we are only addressing the building on Frankstown at this time. Um, and we'll do the, the rear portion, the portion that fronts primarily on, on Braddock in a later phase. Um, scope of work, we're gonna take the fire escapes off, we're gonna um increase the number of apartments from six to ten, do a full renovation. Um, we're not adding to the building, we're not expanding uh the square footage. We're just increasing the number of units and adding some doors and windows, and notably today, a dumpster. We can go to the next slide. So this is the site plan, and we're gonna zoom in, but uh, right now, both buildings are on one parcel, and we're gonna subdivide that parcel to put them back as two separate parcels, one parcel building. We'll go to the next slide. So this is the, the parcel that's available, and just to reference, right, our residential compatibility requires the dumpster to be twenty-five feet away from um, an adjoining residentially zoned property. Um, the immediately adjacent property is residentially zoned. Um, I think you can clearly see there is no space on the site that is twenty-five feet away uh from the adjoining property. Um, previously, dumpsters were kind of located in the public right-of-way in the alley at the rear, and um it was not the best situation, so we're proposing a enclosure um that fronts on Frankstown Avenue that's, you know, well-constructed and, and houses the, the dumpsters well. I will note.
It's, is it, is it just a function of the parcels being adjacent to one another? Are there any other residential properties that would be affected by the dumpster, or is it just these combined buildings?
Yeah, yeah. No, so the, there's a building to the plan south. Um, that's not shown on the site plan. There's a building on that next parcel.
Could we go back to the aerial view, just so we can understand what that would be?
Yeah, so the orientation's a little different here, um, but yeah, right where the cursor is, that's the adjoining building. I can't remember if they have a zero foot or a three foot setback. Um, so that's the affected property.
But the, but the dumpster, you said, would be right on Frankstown Avenue?
Right, and pretty much in between that building and our subject property.
And it's the, what is it immediately across Frankstown from where you're proposing to put the?
Yeah, there are, there are some residences there, and you may be able to tell um, the residence, residences immediately across the street front towards Braddock, and the residences a little down the street front, front towards Frankstown. Um, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it would be the, but do you have a rendering of what the front of the dumpster would look like?
I don't, I do apologize. It's, you know, we do a wood enclosure with a steel frame so that, you know, sometimes if you build them too lightly, they get beat up and the, nobody ever closes the door, so we do a steel frame and wood slats on the frame. Um.
Okay. But, and, and I guess technically, depending on the width of the Frankstown Avenue right-of-way, you might have the full thirty feet setback from those parcels?
Sure, Frankstown is, is quite wide. Um, ten-foot sidewalk, parking lane, driving lane.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably a sixty-foot right-of-way.
You, you may actually meet the um residential compatibility standard with respect to that for those residences.
Those parcels, yeah.
All right, and then the parking issue, and we don't have a lot size per unit issue any longer, but
Mm-hmm.
Um, adding four um units to a six-unit building, is there, I'm assuming there's, there was never any onsite parking for the six units?
That's correct. And then you can see from this aerial how much parking is available, right? There's a full parking lane on Frankstown, there's a full parking lane on Braddock, and there are essentially, you know, no cars in the site area um parked on those. And, and then we're gonna provide um some bike parking in the basement as well. Um.
Are there any uh major transit lines on Frankstown or Braddock or both?
So going down Frankstown, the eighty-six and the seventy-seven bus go immediately in front of our building. Um, and then about three blocks away, we have the seventy-one D and the seventy-four, and then the busway is six blocks away, so the transit service to the site is excellent.
Okay, good, all right.
Lastly, we had a development activities meeting, um, you know, a lot of conversations about parking and, and, and trash location. Um, overall positive, I, I believe you have a report from that, and um, yeah, I don't have anything else from my presentation.
Which is the um community organization that you met with?
Um, Homewood Community Collaborative, I believe is the name, and then, yeah, there's a couple organizations like Operation Better Block, precipates, and, and other organizations in the neighborhood.
Okay, we'll take a look at the damn meeting report as well. I don't have any other questions.
No, there's no questions, Madam Chair.
No questions.
All right. Do we have anybody attending either in person or online who would like to comment with respect to the application for Frankstown Avenue? If so, raise your hand. I am seeing no hands raised, so thank you, Mr. England. We will accept your exhibits as part of the record, and we will issue a decision when possible.
Thank you very much.
Within the time permitted under the house. Uh, the next case of the morning is zone case eighty-five of twenty twenty-five for forty-eight nineteen Dearborn Street. Uh, we have Bob Hardle and Nikki Hardle and Phil Herman, I think. Do.
Hello, is this Nikki?
All right, we're just trying to get the whole development team on line here. Is Bob with you, Nikki, or?
No, he's, he's separate.
Okay.
But he is on.
All right, well, and it, am I, are you two the primary presenters on this?
Um, Bob is.
Okay.
Hello, hi, sorry.
Bob, all right.
My apologies, I was muted there.
All right, do we have anybody else that you're expecting for your?
Phil Herman had a last-minute uh change of schedule, and he won't be joining us, but the two of us are uh capable and qualified to, to do the meeting today.
All right, and do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in place?
This is case eighty-five of twenty twenty-five for forty-eight nineteen Dearborn Street. The application's for the construction of a dwelling unit above an attached, or detached garage that is accessory to the existing house. They're requesting a variance from section nine eleven dot oh two. One dwelling unit is permitted and two dwelling units are proposed. A variance from section nine fourteen dot oh two dot A. Two parking spaces are required and one space is proposed. A variance from section nine oh three dot oh three dot D dot two. A five-foot interior side setback is required and one foot four inches is proposed. A variance from section nine twelve dot oh four dot B. A two-foot rear setback is required and zero foot is proposed. And a variance from section nine twelve dot oh four dot E. Fifteen-foot one-story maximum accessory structure height and twenty-one feet, uh, twenty-one point five feet, two stories is requested.
All right, um, who, who's starting on behalf of the applicant? I mean, we do have the um presentation materials, so.
That'll be me.
I, I mean, this is, you're asking for a second residential unit in a district where they're not permitted? So that's a use variance, and then there are a lot of dimensional variances associated with what you're requesting. I mean, it, it's a use variance, so why? What, what's the hardship associated with the property? And I understand it's an ADU, but if ADUs were permitted, then we wouldn't be here having a variance hearing, so. Carry on.
All right, thanks for the opportunity to present. Um, the ADU obviously is n- not permitted or no longer permitted. Um, and so that's why we are here. Uh, as you can see on the first page of the presentation, a rendering of what the um finished uh ADU will look like, um, and then.
What, what it's proposed. I mean, it, it's a um, two units are not permitted in R-one districts, and this isn't, ADUs are not permitted, so what is the hardship associated with the property that prevents it from being used as permitted?
The.
I mean, that's, that's what we have to evaluate. Like, why, why, what makes this property different from any other property that makes a two-unit appropriate on this R-one site as opposed to every other R-one site on the street?
I, this is the uh, the owner of the property that would like to accomplish the goal of adding the ADU above the existing detached garage, and you know, there was a pilot program in the neighborhood that uh had ADUs as a permitted use by right. Um, the pilot program was two years and that time has elapsed, so while there was once a um by right use for this type of project, that is no longer the case, and so.
Well, just let me clarify something. You um aren't the owner of the property. What is your relationship with the property, then?
I'm the project manager for this project as well as the manufacturer for the modular uh residential structure that would be um the, the studio ADU.
Well, and again, I, I understa- there, there's a reason I'm gonna go back to, the board doesn't make legislative decisions, so if there, if ADUs had been permitted and now they're not, that's within the province of the legislating body, which is city council, to decide whether ADUs are allowed in this neighborhood or not, and now they're not. So, again, in that circumstance, the board has to consider whether there's a hardship associated with this property that prevents it from being used
Sure.
as permitted, so that's where it, it, we can't say, oh, they didn't really mean it, they really mean to allow ADUs.
I, I completely understand, and I, I do clearly see what you're saying about the, you want me to present the hardship, and
Yeah.
you know, this is uh the terminology that I had not come across throughout this process, and so, you know, i- i- in the moment, um, you know, I was just kind of focused on what my presentation plan was, but basically, I think the hardship is that the owner of the property is not able to fully realize its potential as.
That's not a hardship as a matter of zoning law. So, uh, as a matter of zoning law, a hardship is something unique associated with the property that makes this property different from any, any other property. And maximizing the owner's return on investment is not a hardship that's associated with the property. It means that it's the shape of the property, or what's the topography, what's, what's around it. It's like, if, if there's nothing about this property that makes it different from its neighbors, it's hard for this board to say that there's a hardship associated with it.
Well, I'm sorry.
Here, and, and, and I will say, um, if you've been put in a position of not understanding the legal standards that we need to review, we are perfectly happy to give you a, like, we just did for. we are perfectly happy to give you a, like, we just did for a case earlier today. If you were expecting one thing and the evidence that we need to review is something else, we'd rather have you come back um than to, you know, deny it and say, go away you know, now. Do you know what I'm saying? So.
I I absolutely do, and and I greatly appreciate that. I think that I would like to try to work through this today as, you know.
Well, it it, but if you're not going to be giving us the evidence that is going to be helpful, then like.
Well, I I think I can, I I, you know, I'm obviously well versed and and immersed in this and, you know, it's just a terminology thing, and so as I, you know, pivot a little bit here, I would say that we're working within the constraints of a existing detached garage which has established the uh setbacks from the property line, which
That may be, okay, and 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 I I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is fine from the structural standpoint and the setback standpoint, but you're proposing a use, which is a two unit use, which is not permitted in the district. So there has to be some hardship associated with the property that prevents it from being used for a single unit. And the fact that you want to have a second unit and would get better investment if there were a second unit is not a hardship that goes to that variance request. So that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not impossible to come up with some evidence or argument about hardship. But the, the variances for the dimensional aspects are viewed differently than the use, and right now, like I said, the use isn't permitted in an R one district and we have a legislative decision that says ADUs are not permitted, so and whether that was by lapse of the overlay district or whatever, it's like right now we're looking at an ordinance that doesn't allow two units, so again, if you, if you want us to to proceed, we can proceed, but the evidence relating to the setbacks for the existing structure don't get you over the hurdle for the two unit issue.
So, as far as the two options go, proceeding or delaying, so I understand that to make a, you know, informed decision. If I were to just kind of kick the can down the road here, would it just be rescheduled for a future date and I would, you know, go back to the drawing board and present different material and how long?
So we 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 would, if if, we don't want to delay things. I mean, we're we're giving you an opportunity to present additional evidence that might support why two units on this site and give us a little information about the neighborhood and maybe there are two unit uses throughout the neighborhood that we should be taking into account. Maybe this is, you know, I I don't know what that evidence is. All I'm saying is that right now it's kind of a hurdle to get over. The board, we're we're not going to, you know, make you wait months and months. We would get you on an agenda as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that, I think that's, I think that's the way to go then. I I do think that there is there, without, you know, poking something up, I do think that there is a case to be made, but uh, being that I'm not thinking about it that way, I probably could use the extra time.
Yeah, I I I I have to say, that's probably a good idea. The board does have forty-five days to issue a decision after, so it's not like you were going to get a decision today.
I was aware of that, yes.
Yeah, so, a- and we try to issue decisions pretty effectively, but like I said, we're not it, we're, we we do have to, you you wouldn't be on an agenda next week because we're not going to be here next week. But we would get you on an agenda as quickly as possible.
I understand and I appreciate that. So would I get in touch via email with the person I've been?
Mr. Shepkey?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you a, an email after this meeting and we can figure out a new date.
Okay, yeah, that works.
And and I apologize, but like I said, it it's just a, it's a challenge for the board. Like I said, the dimensional variances, I understand you're dealing with an existing structure, but the real challenge is proposing two units where only one is permitted.
Understood, yeah, useful exercise for me and uh, you know, I'll be prepared and uh, you know, again, I appreciate your time.
And we look forward to seeing you again.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, and for anybody else who is attending, um, we are going to allow a continuance for this. Um, if you want to have direct notice of it, I see, um, Marissa, you have a hand raised?
Yes, I was just going to ask if I could be notified as a neighbor for when the rescheduled meeting occurs.
Uh, yeah, um, please send an email to zoningboard@pittsburghpa.gov just so I have your contact information and I'll uh, inform you of when the meeting is rescheduled.
And just make sure you note that it's for Dearborn Street, so Daniel knows who to get with what notice.
Appreciate that, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for that explanation and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing you again soon.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next case of the morning is uh, is it nine forty? It is past nine forty. All right, Zone Case ninety-three of twenty twenty-five for twelve oh one Wiley Avenue. The applicant is Mr. Colano. Hello, Mr. Colano. Um, are you expecting Colin to also be on with you?
He's monitoring, but he will not speak.
Less spoken to apparently. Mr. Colano, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Shepkey, could you read?
This is Zone Case ninety-three of twenty twenty-five for twelve oh one Wiley Avenue. The application is for the installation of an electronic sign and they're requesting a special exception pursuant to section nine nineteen dot O three dot P dot two dot A to allow a public destination facility of electronic sign.
All right, Mr. Colano.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question at the outset? Which is going back to the special definitions for signs? And the one of the definitions is for public destination facility. So I appreciate what the facility is, but I'm curious as to whether it is actually a public destination facility under the definitions?
It, um, according to the um, zoning staff, it fits that criteria. It's the uh, concert venue with, with the uh, proper amount of attendance that classifies it as a uh, public destination facility.
Well, I I and I, I may not agree with zoning staff if the definition is a minimum, I mean, well, it's something we'll take a look at, it's just that it requires a minimum annual attendance of five hundred thousand people, which would require sold out events like every other day.
Uh, there will be up, events almost daily.
For an indoor outdoor seating to accommodate a minimum of ten thousand people, so it's forty-five hundred seat theater.
The projections are to be well over five hundred thousand per year.
Well, again, I I I have to call me skeptical on that, but it's being presented as a public destinat- and if, you can tell me if you don't know the answer to this. If it were not a public destination facility, what sign requirements would apply?
The.
We'll look it up too, I just.
I I'm not prepared to um, to to read that text specifically.
We'll, we'll check. It's like, again, I understand where this is, but um, as you know, we are mindful of sign requirements, so.
City staff is here too.
Okay, we'll just wait, yeah, okay, carry on.
Okay, um, Bill Colano, Colano Design here on behalf of Live Nation for the uh, Citizens Live at the Wiley uh, entertainment facility that is on the old Civic Arena site. Uh, in the photograph that we have on the screen right now, you'll see a high wall sign that is coming up for review by planning commission later, but here, we're here today for the uh, electronic sign that is over the entry in the lower right part of the drawing. Next image. Starting from bottom right, we can see the outline of the SP eleven special district. Uh, in the upper right, we see the lot that it is on. The building is outlined in uh, red dotted. And on the left, we have the site plan uh, showing where the building is nestled within that parcel. Next. This is the uh, section of code for the Lower Hill Plan Development District. And there are two types of electronic signs that are permitted. One of them is a large video display that we are not utilizing. And the second type is a uh, a simple electronic sign. And that electronic sign is allowed to be up to twelve hundred square feet. Uh, the drawing on the left shows the sign that is wrapped around that canopy on the left. Next.
Can you, can you just hold on that um, regulation for a second? It's, they're be permitted is that two uh, major public destination electronic signs in all of the SP districts? I mean, in the whole SP eleven?
That is uh, per public destination facility.
That's not how it reads, but whatever. Okay. Okay.
Okay, onward. The sign uh, has dimensions. It is one continuous electronic LED sign. Uh, it will have no motion or animation. And in the bottom part of that, it shows um, the text block is covering it, but we have a sign proposed that is two hundred and eight square feet and change uh, versus the twelve hundred square feet that is allowed. So we're a fraction of the size.
So this, and how are you distinguishing this, the electronic sign, which you're calling the public destination sign?
The large.
Different from the high wall sign, which won't be an electronic sign?
It it'll just be an illuminated um, high wall sign. And the the differences between the large video display, which contains animation and motion, uh, we are not proposing that. We have uh, we're using the electronic sign allowance.
But no additional signage is proposed? No additional electronic signage, even if you had up to twelve hundred square feet, you're limiting it to, what is the square footage that you're proposing?
Two oh eight point and change.
So that's it?
That's it. And last slide, little glamour shot of what the sign looks like. And on that canopy, we have static signage that has the name of the facility. It will not change. And the electronic sign is what is uh, indicated in green.
So it just goes around the corner at that single entrance?
That's correct.
And there, there's no other electronic signage or is there another entrance or that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
And that's my presentation for today.
In in terms of limitations, if there were conditions that track the requirements of the code and your representations here, that would be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, I I do want to hear from Steph, so and then questions or other comments.
Yes, so I think.
Could you personally try to identify yourself for record of this morning?
Thank you, uh, Paul Cancilla, C A N C I L L A, uh, Planning Manager Development Review at the Department of City Planning.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, so I think your question was if this facility was not considered a major public destination facility, per that special definition, your question was what would this classification be? Is that correct? So that would be, so this SP district allows, in the the specific part of the SP district allows for electronic signage similar to what's allowed in the GT and the Riv North Shore zoning district. Um, so essentially, uh, what is being permitted, uh, what is being proposed, they meet those requirements. The difference is that for a major public destination, major public destination facility, they're allowed certain additions such as motion and being able to have sort of logo for sponsors for certain events uh, that occur at the site.
Which is, again, that's why I want to clear, I mean, if if we were to need to grant a variance, I want to understand what we would be granting a variance from if this were not considered.
A major.
And that's from the staff perspective, did you ask the applicant for information? Because again, it's a forty-five, forty-five hundred seat theater
Right.
to get to five hundred thousand a year is a pretty dense use of, like, again, it's 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 a sold out event every other day. Essentially, or every third day.
Yeah, I think every third day.
So even optimistically, I I I just, did, did you request any data from the applicant to get to that definition?
I don't believe so. I'm technically not the reviewer on this one, but I am not, I am not a hundred percent sure if we have that information. I think we kind of um, based off of the the capacity and the the understanding from the applicant of just the, essentially sort of the narrative of how many events may go on at this uh, facility that we kind of classify, we did classify it as that, um, but um, that's.
I read definitions, so I.
Right.
And that's, that's where I, 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 we can take a look at it as we're issuing a decision. I just wanted to understand what our world of regulations might be.
Understood.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
No additional questions.
Any questions from you? Anything else you want to add, Mr. Colano? If you're going to add anything, you have to come up to the mic.
Only that the um, building since the very uh, first review has been classified as a major public destination facility. The whole, it's, it's always been labeled that.
Accurately or not, I don't know. So, I mean, you could call it that, but it may not be that under the definitions. Again, we'll take a look. I appreciate the context. But, and we're only looking at the electronic sign, not the high wall sign. The planning commission gets to look at that. And um, if you, if there's nothing additional in terms of evidence, we will close the hearing for today. Thank you, everybody who's been here. Thank you, other Mr. Colano. Um, but we're gonna, and thank you to the co-porter, we're gonna close up for the day.